May tenth, two thousand and eighteen planning board meeting. The work section night, we've got a couple of things, conceptual plans and the application to remove a section of stone wall.
Stone wall was filed first.
First on the agenda?
Yep.
Is the stone wall removal? Do we have somebody can explain what they want to do?
You get to stand in front of the microphone.
Plan is to put in a barn slash garage. And we can't go up around the house with a driveway because it's all slate and rock up there. So, down on the other side of our property, we're gonna a straight up driveway. But there's a section of stone wall that we'd have to remove. The rest of the stone wall is pretty messed up. We're gonna fix the rest of that.
Is the permit signed by the TBW already?
No, it has to come here first.
That means Kyle, Benji looked at it, he's okay with we won't put the driveway?
Yep.
Is it legal to have two driveways on one lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have any, there's a provision found, it's not like a state road, we can only have one every so many feet. We got two hundred and sixty feet between the driveways, is that what you're showing here?
Uh, yes. No, two sixty from the edge of the driveway to the edge of the property. Our driveway now is like ten feet wide, so maybe two fifty.
Okay. The barn isn't a commercial business, it's a private barn for personal use.
Yeah.
Is that, the trees already cut where the driveway is going, is that what this first picture is showing?
Yep.
So where's the wall?
Between this black lines, I think it's.
Yeah, those, yeah, those black lines.
And the section that deals with driveways. I thought we adopted something.
It's in the subdivision.
It's in the subdivision, right.
Only subdivision.
Right.
And we then took the standards and put them on the driveway permit. I think it's Article six or Article eight.
What are you gonna do with the?
Eight.
Rocks.
I was gonna fix the rest of the stone wall where they, there's like a, I guess where they dug a culvert down the side of the road. They redid the road two years ago, I think.
Okay.
And some of them got knocked over and wherever. I was just gonna fix the rest of the stone wall on the road right there.
Okay. Could you, um, this doesn't give any dimensions on how much wall you want to take out?
I can, in, pretty much in between where those two black lines are.
Could you?
You mean how, how wide is it?
Yeah, could you write a, take this?
Yeah.
Write a width or something on there?
Is that all you need like that?
Yeah. We have to give this to the Salkman because someone's asked to approve it.
Oh, okay.
We'll wait to make a recommendation to him. It's gonna be a gravel driveway, you're gonna tire it or anything or?
Just, yeah, gravel. I guess I have to.
You're gonna have to tire the apron.
Yeah, eight feet up, I think he said.
Twenty feet wide by tapering down to eighteen feet.
Oh, it's twenty, I thought it was thirty, alright.
Yeah, whatever's on the driveway permit.
Yeah, you gotta pave it.
And you gotta go back ten feet with paper.
Pretty much put it back to where the stone wall is now for.
Okay.
Tearing that, right?
Yeah, the specs are on the application.
Uh, Benji came out and looked at it. Yeah, he said he wants a pipe in there. He looked at it before we cut any trees or anything.
This is not a shared driveway, is it?
No.
Just for you?
Just us, yep. I'm not sure yet. It's gonna be five hundred feet probably.
Or fireworks.
I asked, so I went down there the other day to get a permit for brush, to burn brush, and he said, as long as the road agent's fine with it, I'm fine with it. I said, okay.
But, what'd you tell, what'd you tell him how long it is?
Oh, really? That'll change it?
Yeah, anything over four hundred feet.
Okay. It may be, it may be less than four hundred, but I'm guessing five.
Yeah, make it, make it three fifty, you're fine.
Okay.
We're just gonna save the rocks from using on the existing wall and other places.
How far apart did you say the?
Two hundred and fifty feet.
No, between the two? No, how, how much wall is being removed?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five?
Actually, that's, that's at the road. He doesn't need to take out thirty-five feet to get the driveway through because it's backways.
Oh yeah, I could take out less as long as, I just, I guess I put that to be safe.
I mean, it's not a road, you just build an access way to get to your barn, right? Doesn't need to be more than sixteen feet wide.
Yeah.
I mean, twenty-five feet would be plenty wide enough to do what he needs to do. Yeah.
Twenty?
Twenty-five.
You're saying twenty, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty?
Twenty-five, yeah. It needs a little room to push snow off the side of it, so.
I figured I'd make it wide, and I'm gonna have to bring in Phil to get a barn up there. So I figured I'd make it wide enough to get a truck up there and do what they gotta do.
Was that a motion, Bruce?
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I recommend that we, uh, rec, I move that we recommend to the selectmen that they approve the removal of twenty-five feet of stone wall with the rocks to be replaced on other portions of that wall for the purpose of making a second driveway to the, to the property. And this driveway shall be.
About two hundred and fifty feet from the existing driveway?
Yeah, starting two hundred, no, he says from the property line. Starting two hundred and sixty feet from the western property line?
Yes.
Wait a second.
What's the address?
Uh, three sixty-seven Flanders.
All favor? Aye, opposed? Extinctions? Okay.
You will need to get on the docket for the Board of Selectmen's meeting. They meet every two weeks.
Okay.
So it'll be a week from this Monday, and I will send this up in I O M E, so she'll be ready for you. But you'll have to call her and remind her to put you on the docket.
She won't be until Monday.
Okay. It'll be a week from Monday, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can call Wendy, she'll tell you what's going on.
Okay.
Next we've got Howard and Martha.
Thank you.
Yep.
Calligan?
Colugian.
Colugian?
Lugian.
Colugian.
We answered him many things though.
Well.
We recognize our name, that's good.
Two seventeen Colby Road. You wanna do a event venue barn. Okay. Well, explain what you wanna do.
We're working on getting an ADA bathroom in there now. Like to have that, but we had an event there recently where we just had a porta potty rented. And we have plenty of parking on our property for fifty to a hundred cars if we use the backfield. And I've also spoken with Safely Storage, Safely Store Storage on one fourteen. And he's very interested in renting out some of his space and doing valet for overflow parking on his lot. If we need it.
That's the, you just passed the, down at the front of the hill?
Yeah, right across from the pond.
Melcher's old house. Yellow house, top of the hill.
Yep, yep.
I believe the question is, site plan, no site plan zoning, legal, illegal?
Yeah, I don't know, we gotta look at zoning here and see what, um.
Good luck.
So, how do we classify it, right? It's in the residential zone? RA, right?
Is it RA or R?
R.
R, okay. So it's, whatever is permitted in RA and R, right?
Why?
Uh, isn't, well, maybe not. Well, let's look at what, um, permitted uses. Churches, ministry-owned and operated educational facilities, nursing homes, golf courses, or any municipally owned or operated facility. Obviously, it's not one of those. Agriculture? Not that either. Single or two-family dwellings, detached garages, or other similar type structures, greenhouses, breezeways. Home-based business, home occupations, including unlimited lawyer, doctor, realtor, accountant, or notary. None of this will fall under either of those categories. Accessory uses of structures and open use of land only incidental to the permitted principal use of the premises that kept us otherwise specified. Plus the hundred and fifty watch for conservation purposes. Well. We had a guy up at Mount Beaverman Road that came to us with a similar type of.
That never went anywhere.
Yeah, he wanted to do like a conference center or something, right? Isn't that what his idea was? Was, I mean, you're not gonna have overnight staying there, it's a day, day use type of thing.
Yep.
First of all, we've got Article nineteen special exceptions. Which if they meet the criteria, is a right.
Which one would it be?
Well, nineteen one four, a hotel.
There's no overnight staying, so.
Well, I, I, no, it's not a traditional hotel, but.
It's not a bed and breakfast either.
And without people staying overnight, it's really not.
Hotel, tourist porter home, you're right.
Start a seasonal home camp, campground. Some more sports racetrack.
How frequently would this be rented out?
Mostly on the weekends, I would believe, probably not every weekend. And just during the summer months, spring to maybe September, October, because it's not heated.
May, June, July, August, September, October, so six months. Max, so it's twenty-four maximum. If, if you did it every weekend.
Right, which we probably will not.
Very unlikely.
And, and you say, the capacity of this building, assuming that it's approved?
Well, I had this fire chief out there, and he says that you couldn't fit three hundred inside of it. And it, three hundred was the marker for having a whole new set of rules that we had to abide by. So, it's, the doors will always be open, there'll be food served in it, not by us, only if they bring food in. Um, we don't sell anything, it's just renting this spot. We had someone approach us very recently for a memorial end of life service they wanted to have in there, or were thinking about having in there. Um, we've, thinking of movie nights and dance nights for adults with disabilities. I used to work with adults with disabilities for many years. There's a lot of different things, church picnics, it's not exclusive, it's not just weddings. It's just an area that's big where people can have a celebration or a graduation party or something where they couldn't have it in their own home.
Would it all be contained within the barn, or is it?
Barn in the yard. Backyard.
You gonna build a barn?
No, we have it. Yes.
And what side is that?
I don't know the square footage, the chief, the, the fire chief has been in there and looked at it, and he thought it all looked okay. There wasn't anything I needed to do other than put up railings. I'm not sure what the footage of the barn is.
I'm not sure either.
We didn't measure that.
So, is, is he gonna give you, he would approve the use for three hundred people?
Oh, less, he said it would, yes.
Up to?
He says if you hit three, he, he said the barn wouldn't hold three hundred people anyway. But if, he said that was the, if, if it was more than three hundred, we would have to have all kinds of special things added to the barn, sprinkler systems and all that. But under three hundred, that was the amount that said what we wanted to do was fine with what we had. Because we, we wouldn't have three hundred people.
And you have parking for how many cars?
On the backfield, we could probably put fifty to a hundred cars. We had twenty-five, thirty just on the side lawn.
Right.
A couple of weeks ago when we did the pine tree riot event in our backyard for the town of Ware. And in the barn.
What are the tax card, the barn's like thirty-four by thirty-six, that's some of it, right?
That's probably right, I've never measured it.
It has a loft.
There were a hundred and twenty people there for the event that we had a pine tree riots, and it held it pretty nicely.
Isn't that parking all fit on your lot?
That, or if there's overflow, Safely Storage said we can valet and use this break, use this space, we would rent out space for him, with him.
Where is Safely Store?
It is right across from Dunkin' Donuts on one fourteen.
The store is close.
Oh, 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 okay.
I've spoken with the police chief and the New Hampshire Liquor Commission, all the different people. I've tried to figure out what needs to be done before coming to this meeting.
So you would be serving liquor?
No, but I need to know what the laws were, and so I called them just to find out.
So, if I wanted to have a graduation party, I could not bring my own liquor?
You could, yes. It depends on whether or not the town grants us having a business or not. No, you can bring it, they, they.
Can't sell.
We're not selling any liquor, we are not asking to sell liquor, so we're not looking for that. So I called the New Hampshire, it was recommended to me, I believe by the police chief Sean Kelly, to call them and just find out what were the parameters were of the different types of venues and what the laws were for.
So you don't, you don't need any special license if you're renting out the space?
If I'm renting, yes.
And the renter brings his own liquor?
They can always be O B.
That's correct, we don't need a special license of any kind if they bring their own.
And say, say they had a cash bar, they would have to get the license?
That's correct.
Yes.
But it would have nothing to do with you?
Correct.
I just wanted to know what it all entailed, so I called them.
They, they can do whatever, you can, you can rule act, right?
No, they're residential.
I know, but if you read this correctly, presidential rule of law, I understand.
You're talking about special exceptions? Then you're correct. You are correct, that the special exceptions, Article nineteen, are uses that will be permitted by special exception in the residential, rural, agricultural, and village zoning districts.
The state, that's, that's a, I should call the laws, they address type of activity under farm activity, what was it, uh, the guy in Henniger's? Rules on a regular basis.
Oh, that guy's the Christmas tree farm on Foster Hill?
Yeah, Foster Hill, he's been trying to get the wedding venues.
He claimed he was in agricultural pursuit and wanted to have weddings there.
He had a tree farm and all that.
Yeah, that actually is, is allowable.
It took him years to get it, but yes, it's allowable.
So.
But that was, I think that was related to an agricultural, a, a use of the land for agricultural purposes.
Yeah, it was, that he claimed it was an agricultural use. That have, yeah, that having a wedding in his backyard was an agricultural use. And that's what, and that's why Hennecker contested it, because they didn't think it was.
Yeah, but as I understand it, that is a fact. I mean, I, I, in a farm general, if you're, that is a farm activity.
If you have a farm.
Well.
You gotta have a cow, you take one of your cows over to their house and it'd be an agricultural pursuit.
Flabbergasted.
Yeah, that's right.
I would say there's certainly plausibilities, but they might have to research a little. Agritourism. That is, that is, uh. If they have the right set of circumstances, you might be successful.
There is.
I don't know what they ask.
If, if we can't find a legitimate category that you fit in here, you can always go to the zoning board to get a variance. The concern I think that we have is that, that before anything be done there, we wanna make sure that the neighbors are notified. Because obviously, if I were your next door neighbor, I'd be concerned about the traffic on a Sunday afternoon or whenever you're renting it. If you could.
Um, no, he was, he was the parking, and so that's why I went with the storage unit place. And he kind of just deferred to you all.
Do you do any farming thing there at all?
Well, just gardening, you know, planting flowers.
Your own personal use.
Mm-hmm, personal use.
If you'd like, we can sell some of that stuff.
Yeah, raise six chickens and sell a dozen eggs and now you're a farm?
That's right.
Got it.
Yep.
If, if they get a variance, would we require a site plan review?
I think we need to for the parking.
Yeah, and so that would require notification to the butters.
Right.
On a quick read, I can't see anything that allows this. It's, it doesn't seem to be permitted use, and it doesn't seem to fall in any of the special exceptions. And so, I mean, we probably need to read this again and make sure that we're right. But assuming for the moment that it doesn't, then one option for them is to get a variance. And then, we do a site plan review to make sure that, for that, that you have a, now you have permission to use the property for that purpose. Then we require a site plan review to make sure that it's not going to unduly interfere with neighbors, that the road traffic is reasonable, that the parking that you say is there is adequate, and so forth.
Couple of things you read off, we are not like a funeral home or hotel, but we would provide the services that hotels do, as far as wedding receptions or graduation parties. Someone did just recently, had someone pass away and approached us talking about using it for the celebration end of life ceremony. So although we are not those things, those are the type of things that we would be holding.
Nineteen one three, nineteen one four. Yeah, still need to go to the zoning board for that, because you need a special exception for, for that anyway. And it says not permitted in residential or village districts, which means you'd need a variance, and you're in a residential district. I think personally, you'd be much better going for just what you explained to us that you're trying to do. Instead of trying to morph into the something that is related to something that's allowed by special exception. Because really nothing even close.
This is not a B and B in any sense.
No.
You're not renting rooms to these people.
No.
Would you like us to?
No, they wouldn't be in the house.
Right. I, I've been in your house, I don't think you'd want to do that.
I know that some hotels require, in order to use the conference room, you have to have a block of rooms.
Right.
And, you know, if there was a requirement that we have, somebody spend one night, you know, we could put that in a contract.
You have, then you.
You'd still have to go get.
You still need a variance. Would there be any, uh, what's the, what's a month, that require anything? Not that they're suggesting you have, just curious. Was the line, right? Where's the line? Yeah. I mean, everybody has a big problem with the house with the line. Right.
Yeah, but that's. Yeah, but that's, these folks are renting this out and making money. It's a business.
It's a business.
It's not that they're, it's, it, the party that they had to celebrate
Pine tree riots?
Pine tree riot was the same thing you might have as inviting your friends over for a birthday party. It's a personal event. They weren't charging for it. It was just a bunch of people that they wanted to come over to engage in a celebration and that's not what they're talking about here.
For us, it was like a dry run. It worked out really well. We also had our church picnic there in our yard and that worked out really well. Everybody enjoyed it. The, the, the facility handled it.
They've got a nice setting there.
Thank you.
Question about that. Right, that's old residential.
We are too.
You know, that was a fine car.
The first lawn, actually, in the area. That house was the first house on that street.
So that wasn't agricultural at that time and it doesn't carry over to now?
No, it was rezoned at some point and that's why we have to... That's the rule of the day. Windows roll will be fifty years from now. I think you need to go to the Z B A. And because there's no, it's not listed as something, you got a special exception for you, you, I think you need to apply for a variance.
Okay.
And my question is, what do they apply for a variance from? The fact that I won't let them do it?
It's not, it's not a permitted use.
Okay, so I have to write, they have to apply to me, I have to deny them and that gets them to the Z B A?
Yeah, right.
Got that?
Got that.
And then when you go to the Z B A, they're gonna, all goes well, you get a variance and you'll have to come back here for a site plan and we're gonna be looking at essentially your parking. For how many people you say are gonna be there.
But also if you're close to your neighbors physically and this would, and I'm saying, if, and this would create noise or the amount of traffic would be upsetting to people, it's possible that the, the butters, which would have to be notified, could come in and object and we would have to consider those objections.
Reasonably.
And how close are your nearest neighbors?
Seven acres. We own five acres total, but we're only using two fifty of the cleared land, two point five four nine.
So if, if somebody has a pretty noisy party and it's one o'clock in the morning, would your neighbors hear that? That would be...
Well, yeah, we can hear cold springs. We hear cold springs and stark tavern.
Okay.
But there's a noise variance. Don't we need to stop at a certain time in Ware?
We, we, let's assume that the neighbors were very concerned about the noise. One of the things that we do in site plan review is determine what your hours of operation are, your days, your seasonal, the, and the hours could be limited so that you couldn't have it, for example, after midnight on Saturday nights.
I wouldn't want it after like...
No, I understand.
We might cut it off at ten o'clock.
Yeah.
In other words, the operation would be considerate of the neighbors' desire to go to sleep.
Right.
We don't want to be a problem to anybody.
Right.
Yeah. When we had a New Year's Eve party and we were on the west coast, we used to celebrate with the ball dropping in New York at nine o'clock our time and kicked everybody out at nine thirty and told them to go home because we'd celebrated. Same thing here. We're not gonna want to be up that late.
They're not holding any warrants.
No.
Have you inquired about liability insurance?
We have.
It's not covered under your homeowner's, I take it?
Probably not.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we, we will apply with Chip and Chip will sternly tell us no.
Right.
Right.
And then we can apply for a variance.
Right.
Do it on a Monday morning at eight fifteen or Friday afternoon at four fifteen and you'll get the quickest no you ever got in your life.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like a great idea.
Thanks, man.
We offered it to the police chief or what was it, the fire, fire chief for a party for his guys and he liked that idea.
It'd be nice to have something like that in town.
I think so. We want to be, you know, public to the town.
You know, a lot of it is the donation, you know, giving back to the church, the, really the different departments. But then there is nice to be able to have, have some that is for profit to help pay for all the donations.
Right, but I, correct me if I'm wrong, if they're not doing it as a business, if, for example, they let the churches, they let the police use it, that, that would not be something that would require them to even come here. Isn't that correct?
Unless you use it as a tax deduction.
Probably not.
I, I know that you want to charge. I understand that. But if, if you were not charging and you were just simply letting friends and so forth use it, that probably is just normal use of your home.
Right. So shall we consider this a precedent that anyone else who wants to do what they want to do have to go to the zoning board?
Certainly in the residential district.
I got a stack of them.
Events?
People would want to do exactly what they're doing.
Is there something more that we should know as to why so many people would want to do this? Is there something going on?
For the barns, it's a new thing over the last several years. They love that venue instead of a hotel wall room. It's more relaxing. It's countryside.
Okay. So we'll create a new category for me to deal with this stuff.
New Boston does it constantly at four, use that barn for, I've been several of them down there for wedding.
Really?
But, yeah, that's a big thing.
And that barn's not, and that barn's not that old. Old Hilton, that's mid-seventies.
Yeah, it's, it's got a lot of room and so they can have a pretty good venue in there.
Somebody actually approached us, just came up to us and said, can we use your barn? We'd like to replace, we'd like to use your barn. That was a surprise to me, that, that's, but that's apparently a big thing.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we've got Perry Family Revocable Trust, four oh two Old Francis Town Road. Looking to rent the guest cottage.
Airbnb.
Airbnb.
And there's three units in the guest cottage?
Mm-hmm.
So we've got three Airbnb units essentially?
Right. I'm Janice Perry, by the way.
The units are under the past law's name, license for Airbnb or rental for guest cottage by now. Four horses.
I didn't know if I had to put that on there or not, so I did.
What, what does it mean the indoor will be rented for horse owners? What is the indoor?
It's the indoor riding arena.
Oh.
This is, um, it's Paul Bessie and Susan Libby's place, was.
Did they do?
Is this, is this the property in Old Francis Town Road that has that very large arena? As you drive south, it's on the left. As you come from one forty-nine, you're on the left-hand side of the road.
Correct.
And you're on the paved part of the road.
Correct.
Did they ever vote for a cycling before for that arena? Okay.
Well, that stuff predates zoning. It had been, she has old licenses from the building when it was used as a B and B back predating zoning. So I don't think she needs to do anything. I asked her to stand before you wise people and have you interpret the balance of her life.
She is, this is in the R A zone?
Yes.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your first name was?
Janice.
Janice Perry.
Have you rented out those cottages at all since you owned it?
No, I haven't. I, you know, I like to ask permission. Some people said, why did you even ask? But, because there's a bunch of properties already on Airbnb in town, but I just, you know, it had a past use of that. And so I just wanted to do the right thing and, and come here and make sure everything was A okay.
So you want to, you want to rent three guest cottages?
There's, it's one cottage with three, I have a picture.
Yeah, I see a little sketch here.
Yeah, they're just single rooms that have exterior doors and a separate bathroom in each one.
Each, each room has its own bathroom?
Yes.
And it's just one room like a, like a motel room?
Like a little motel room, yes.
So it's a three-unit motel with that?
I guess.
That may not be the way you want to describe it, but functionally, it's, it's like that.
And it is seasonal too, because it's only, it would only be used like May through October most likely, because it's not winterized.
Oh, it's, is, are they heated?
There is heat, mm-hmm. But there, the way the system's set up for water, it would, I'd have to, the, the heat, it's, it wouldn't be worth it to do that. So, so it would just be seasonal, May through October, possibly into November, but, you know, this last year, it got cold so quickly.
Okay.
How old is the licenses that you have?
You know what? I, I meant to grab it tonight and I didn't bring it. I, I, I'm not sure, but they had one through the state. And they did have a history over years of renting this, this building out, like when they would have horse clinics there, they would, that's, I think, I, I'm, I'm not sure if that's initially why these got converted to that or if they were already there when they purchased it, but when they would have clinics, people would stay and, because usually a clinic will be two or three days.
Under Article nineteen, special exceptions, nineteen one three and nineteen one four, nineteen one three says seasonal homes, camps, or campgrounds, whether for private use or for rent. And then, and that the seasonal homes is permitted in the R A district. And hotels, tourist courts, or home, including cabins, cabins and motels, again, not permitted in residential, but it is permitted in R A, but it's by special exception.
When you were talking about the agritourism, I'm like, I had seen on TV about the people that rent out somewhere to walk goats. I can include that. I want to take Sean as goats. We already talked about that. I guess people pay money to come and walk goats.
The arena rental, essentially, that, that's totally separate from a Airbnb thing.
Correct. I, I just put it on there because, like I said, I'm one of these people that, you know, I like to be upfront and, and just, it said to list everything, so I listed. That was, that's what they did too, is, you know, that's been a past use of the property as well.
It's kind of too bad that Craig is not here. I've spoken with him in the past about the Airbnb thing and he doesn't seem to think that there needs to be any kind of regulation on them at all. That it's the same as renting your house and renting your house is illegal thing to do in any zone.
But she's not renting her house. Am I correct? This is not your home?
She's renting...
It is my home.
Yeah, it is.
This property is my home.
No, 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 I understand that, but you, on that property is a house in which, which is your home and in addition to that house, there is this three-room unit as a separate physical building.
Uh, it's attached by a corridor.
To the house?
Mm-hmm.
And there's no meal served. So it doesn't really classify itself in any of the bed and breakfast or motel or any type of categories.
Well, a motel is...
Technically an Airbnb.
A motel is where you rent a room and there's no food service.
Yeah, but...
It could be. And a hotel, you can rent a room.
A motel is not part of your house.
No, I agree.
You know, I'm, just sort of trying to defend both her and Craig's take on this Airbnb thing. And we've got them all over town, literally.
So, so the argument is that, that the zoning ordinance in any district allows anybody who has a home to rent out rooms? Is that the concept? Forgetting about Airbnb, that's just one way to do it. They could put a sign out, rooms for rent.
No, she wants to, in essence, she's renting her house, even though she still lives there. The houses for rent, the facilities for rent, they can rent everything.
She's renting three rooms, assuming that it's all connected and part of the house, just for argument's sake. She's putting up a sign, whether she does it through Airbnb or a newspaper ad or a, whatever, she is saying rooms for rent. I'm renting three rooms in my house. I've got seven bedrooms and I'm gonna, whatever, and I'm renting three of them. That, is that what you're doing? Or did I misunderstand? Airbnb is just a way to get the tenant in to rent.
Right.
You're, you're renting rooms to people. That's what you're proposing to do.
And are they three individual, separate people or the three people off the same group?
I would think at times it would be three separate
Right.
people.
With a non-use law that some of those not permitted expires after?
Yes, two years.
Two years.
However, there's a precedent set with that, with that racetrack out there. It's a racetrack. Once it was a racetrack, it's still a racetrack. It's been owned, the taxes have been paid on it, it's still considered a racetrack. And that was an opinion from the town attorney. Because there's a guy who wants to buy it and make it back into a racetrack again, a functioning racetrack.
And the tax card, what's the tax card say on this stuff? Well, this could take all the way if it's on, if you wanted it to, another one I wanted to, but theoretically, you can rent ten, ten people and you can have thirty people.
Yeah.
On, on what basis?
Yeah.
There's no limit.
But, but where, I'm reading Article seventeen rural ag and I don't see any, anything in there that talks about renting rooms as one of the permitted uses. And then if I go to the section nineteen on special exceptions, seasonal homes, you could argue it's at a seasonal camp or a hotel or a tourist court, cabin and motel. And she can do that if she gets a special exception.
So this area here is the area where those three bedrooms are?
Correct.
Is, is the connection inside or just the covered walkway?
It's enclosed.
It's enclosed, so if it's raining outside, you can walk directly to the house?
Oh, they, they'd have to go out and in. It's, um...
They gotta go out their door because there's no roof over their door to get into the unit.
Right, right, because the door is open to the outside.
And so how do they get into the corridor?
They'd have to walk out the door and then there's another door into the corridor.
Going into the corridor?
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing on the tax card saying that those three units are free. It says two family residence.
So if it's a two-family, she's renting the other family. No different than anybody else renting the other half of a duplex.
Why, why does the tax card say it's a two-family residence?
Yes, it's two F residence, right?
Because there's another apartment within it.
Where?
In the, in the house.
And that apartment has its own separate entrance, its own kitchen, its own bathroom?
Yes.
Its own bedroom?
Yes. My, my sister is in there right now. She moved here. My husband is a Vietnam vet that has severe dementia, most likely from his exposure to Agent Orange. So that was part of how purchasing this property all came to be was to, because she moved here to help me, because at this point, he's twenty-four seven care.
Okay, so in effect, it's not a two-family house. It's, this is like an in-law apartment. Right, and, and so that's within this structure somewhere here. This is a separate...
Well, I was kind of looking around here to see if they said what those were, but it doesn't, it just says...
Do you know what that, what those, those three rooms were used for in the past?
That's what, that's what they used it for, was renting it out. They had, they had a B and B. They had a B and B license, and...
I see.
Right, and then if they had horse clinics, they would rent out the rooms, which was still sort of like a B and B at that point, too.
So somebody might rent a room and use the facility for their horses?
Correct.
It does say, three bedrooms are in the 46 by 20 slab, FFF. Slab, no closets, room with bathroom.
Down low, ladder access.
Attic ladder access, yeah.
When was the last time those rooms were rented?
I'm not sure.
How long have you owned the property?
I just bought it in October.
Oh.
It says three guest suites.
That's in the, that's in that section, that's 20 by 40, so.
Yeah.
And like Chip said, there's, there's so many places with the Airbnb already just pretty much doing the same thing, but, and like I said, other people say, "Why did you say, you know, why did you ask?", but to me, that's who I am, you know, to ask.
And in the future, if something should happen from a legal point of view, you, by doing what you're doing, you're wisely protecting yourself. Very wisely. Other people may have problems.
And those rooms, I just had the electrician in the other day, they do have hard-wired smoke detectors, and we're going to swap those out, because they're, I think, just around 10 years old, maybe a little bit older than, you know, they're, they're just right around 10 years old.
Okay, she made the argument, this is just an ongoing use?
That's what I was thinking. Can you get information from the prior owner?
Mm-hmm.
About how often and when those rooms were rented?
Mm-hmm.
And how, do you know how long the prior owner owned the property?
Twenty-something years, I believe.
It's on the tax card.
Well, does it make any difference?
Look, if, if in fact, this is a continuing use to pre-dated zoning... Do we have any record of, do we have any record of granting an application, a permit to use this?
No.
So it could have been an illegal use.
In the town of where, an illegal use?
Well, when they started this, I may know they've been, we had zoning.
But, right, some of this changed.
Such as it was.
They did have the state permit, though, for the B and B, because that's still posted in one section.
Right, especially if there's a date on it, and I assume there is.
Oh, okay.
John, Johnny had one of those watches, and he was at migrant workers' house.
The easiest thing, I think, would be a demonstration that this has been regularly used in the past for this purpose.
Okay.
If that, if you can't demonstrate that, I think this is an easy case for a special exception.
Yeah, but she got evidence that it was used for that.
Sorry?
She did get some evidence that it was used for that in the past.
Yeah, she's got the license to tell me that.
And it's got a separate septic system?
Yes.
I don't think that's the issue. I think the question is whether there's legitimate use and how long it's been going on.
Yeah, but it must have been, she turns it 10 years ago. So what does that mean? Does that mean she's couldn't go, or, you know, I'm not sure that...
It doesn't, one of the things that strikes me, though, Chuck, is that it was never changed for assessing purposes. It's always been a part of this, three guest suites, each with a private bath, da-da-da, so it was never, no one ever came in and said, "We're not using it for that anymore, we want to change the assessment."
And I think from time to time, Paul Bessie's wife used it for different event types of things down there, where she had people staying. They had horse shows, they did all kinds of stuff.
You know, if there wasn't anything on the card about that space being still the bedrooms and the guest suites and all that, somebody came in to try to sweep it under the rug and get it, not paying the taxes on that, but that doesn't look like that happened.
Are we saying that this is an agricultural use, agritourism?
Well, that hasn't been brought up.
Because...
It definitely fits for that, yeah, because that's one...
Because she's got...
With the barn.
The barn and the arena, and horses and so forth, so clearly it's agriculture.
We don't address that in the zoning law.
No.
Well, no, but it says agriculture, and there's a, and let's see if we define that. The state defines agriculture.
And they have programs down there for kids with special needs.
Okay, agriculture. She'll have the meaning set forth in RSA 2134A. And we just happen to have the latest version. What did I say? 2134A. I'm on page 23. 2134A.
She does all of them.
I'm on the second column.
2134A, and it'll be under Roman numeral two, number five.
Yeah.
Agriculture farming.
Are you reading the breeding, boarding, and raising of horses?
Yeah, it says right down, it says agriculture farming, and then the number five, it says breeding, boarding, raising, training, riding, instruction, and selling of equines.
Yeah, but let's go on to something that even may be better. 2B, it's on the right-hand column. And then go down to five, the marketing or selling, et cetera, products, where not prohibited by a local regulation. Marketing includes agritourism, which means attracting visitors to a farm to attend events and activities that are necessary uses to the primary farm operation, including but not limited to eating a meal, making overnight stays, enjoyment of the farm environment, education about farm operations, or activities.
Right in the middle of the page.
Do you, are you using this for horses? Are you renting it out, or, or is it just your own, your own horses?
A little, a little bit of both. I haven't done much with boarding horses. I mean, it's certainly set up for that. It's, I helped out the high school equestrian team this winter. And, yeah. So one horse did stay there for that, yeah, and two of the kids shared her. Hopefully, hopefully it is going to get hayed the front field this year, yes.
Yeah, I think it's certainly the farm.
I've got two borrowed pigs there at the moment.
Alive or ready for slaughter?
Oh, no, they're alive. There's some knotweed that we're doing an experiment.
If it's successful, would you let everyone in town know?
Unfortunately, the pigs do not like the taste of knotweed, but they're doing an excellent job of rooting it up.
They'll eat knotweed?
Eat everything. They'll eat, they'll eat rye of horses.
Goats will eat it, too.
Goats will eat it, too. Under agritourism, I mean, she can make an argument that this is a permitted use, and she's got, she's got a farm.
Great.
Eating a meal, making overnight stays, enjoyment of the farm environment. I assume that one of the things that will attract people to your place is the fact that it's open. It's a farm-type environment. You've got horses, you've got the arena.
That's what I'm told the attraction was in the past, yes.
I think, I think she, I agree with you. Bruce, I think that this is a part of the agriculture operation under 1732, as we define agriculture in here.
And it's pretty existing.
Has the fire chief done a life safety inspection for you?
I haven't done that yet, no. I wanted to come here first and just see, but I will certainly do that.
For your own insurance purposes, he probably should do that for you.
Go underneath it, Chip, and I think we're all set with you.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, okay, no, I'll bring that in. Okay.
And for being honest, Jack will buy you an ice cream cone, and that is the next thing you see.
Welcome to where?
Thank you. I like the community very much already, so, thank you.
All right, so I just have to bring in that certificate?
Yeah, I'll make a copy of it and put it in your property file. And I'll make a copy of the minutes of this meeting and put it in the property file.
The fire chief for the life safety, you already said you've got the, putting into smoke detectors and stuff.
Your business.
Do you have some minutes?
I have, I don't have them. Chip has them, he can circulate them.
I sent them to everyone.
Oh, you did, you did, and they were brilliantly written, I might say.
And brilliantly sent.
Expeditiously sent.
I might have to find anything.
So what are, what are you doing?
Somebody want to make a motion on the minutes for...
Which date?
April... When was meeting in April? August, May, or May?
Somewhere around the 24th. 25th.
You were in Las Vegas.
I was in Las Vegas.
21st.
Thursday?
Yep.
Would have been the 26th.
26th, April 26th.
Yeah, okay, 26th.
Somebody want to make a motion on the minutes, April 26th?
Since I wrote them, I really shouldn't make the motion, but Mr. Bolton can do so, or Mr.... That doesn't matter.
I'll second. Call in favor. Aye. Propose, abstention. Get motion carries.
3, 0, 1, okay. That's it?
I believe that's it.
So we're adjourned at 8:05?
Meeting adjourned at 8:05.
Excellent.